We have a quorum. Could we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bridgette. And welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the Ojai City Council, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Would you say the pledge for us, please?
Yes. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'll second it.
You gotta get used to it.
All in favor? All in favor approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Okay, before we begin, I just would like to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's today. And I would like to make a land acknowledgement. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects Indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between Indigenous peoples and traditional territories. It signals a commitment to develop a meaningful relationship with the Shumash. In the spirit of healing, we acknowledge that Ojai City Hall is settled on unceded Shumash land. We honor and pay respect to the Shumash community and their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. We hope this acknowledgement and our close relationship with the Shumash community continue to produce honest and respectful discourse about the history of this land. Thank you. All right, we will, because it's a special meeting, we don't have general public comment. We have public comment on the two items. So we'll begin with our first item, item number one, the Finance and Budget Committee. And we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, you'll hear this evening from our Assistant City Manager with backup from our Finance Director who is appearing virtually. Mr. Alameda?
Thank you, Ben. So I will be presenting the Budget and Finance Committee item that is before the council tonight for both adoption and appointment to fill a couple vacancies as they exist on the commission. So this was a request of the City Council. Staff is bringing back, this time, a resolution to affirm the city's Budget and Finance Committee. Previously, this did exist. It existed in the city's investment policy. So this is a standalone resolution that really narrows down the scope and focus of it and gives a lot more detail of what the expectations are of the Budget and Finance Committee. Just as an overview, the city annually develops a proposed budget document covering the period of July first through June thirtieth for the consideration and adoption of the City Council. So as you know, the budget document shows all estimated revenues for the upcoming fiscal year and allocates the city's financial resources to fund programs, projects, and staffing to deliver the services to the city. Also, another important component of the budget is the CIP document, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is one of the components of the budget that's a more longer-looking document that looks at the needs of the city over the coming five years and what programs and projects that we'll be taking on. The proposed doc, the proposed budget should be noted per the Ojai Municipal Code and the City Manager's ordinance in there is the responsibility of the City Manager to present. So the proposed budget that you see and that is the City Manager's proposed budget. Why I note that is the Proposed Budget Committee is just a tool for the City Manager to develop that budget. So those recommendations, at the end of the day, will be probably noted in the staff report and incorporated as appropriate by the City Manager in that proposed budget. So you won't be seeing two proposed budgets from the committee and the City Manager. The development of that proposed budget is something that the Advisory Committee will have a role in. So what the expectation is, is they'll be providing feedback on either potential programs or alternative ideas within the budget. It was back in two thousand when this committee was instituted, and it was a seven-member body at that time, and that's what we're bringing forth, is to keep it as a seven-member body. So those seven members are two City Council Members, the Elected City Treasurer, the City Manager, the Director of Finance, and then two community members. And those community members, we'll talk about how those folks are selected. And then I just wanted to make a note of some changes in the resolution of this committee that's before you from the old one that existed in two thousand. So at our last meeting, the resolution and policy that was in the packet, there's no changes from that one to this one. So those are both the same. But some key points that you should be aware of. The appointment process of the two residents, what we're suggesting happens is they're nominated by the Mayor and City Treasurer with the concurrence of the City Council. Previously, in the old policy, they were selected by the City Manager. So if this is a City Council group, we'd want the City Council to select those two community members. Also, we're putting a focus on what this subcommittee will be looking at. So we're looking at really new programs and projects that are over a quarter of a million dollars. So we aren't looking at the fifteen-hundred-dollar office supply line item. It's really the big items that the city will be taking on is what we'd like that public feedback on. It's also clearly stated that this is a Brown Act body. They are, but that's just clearly stated in the resolution. It's also stated that they are an advisory body. Their decisions aren't binding on either the City Manager or the council. Also, another matter that is defined is staff resources. So obviously, the development of the budget is a very time-intensive process. But with the committee, if there are additional research that they're asking for that's going to require significant staff resources or time, that would need to go to the City Manager for approval. Basic questions, no problem on historical things. But if it's something that's a new program, it's going to take a lot of time to research, we'd want to run that by the City Manager. And those are really the key changes before us. So what we're asking tonight, and I would suggest that we break it up into three motions and three votes, since it's kind of two components of adopting a policy and making some appointments. The first is the council adopt the resolution affirming the Budget and Finance Committee. The second item would be appoint one council member to fill the existing City Council vacancy. And then finally, appoint one community member to fill the existing community member vacancy. And with that, myself or Pam could answer any questions. And I should just clarify, in the staff report, it does have the constitution of the committee. Obviously, the City Treasurer, Steve Olson, Mayor Betsy Stix, City Manager Ben Harvey, Finance Director Pam Greer, the council member seat that's vacant, the resident seat that is filled is Jeff Rains, and then the seventh seat is the other resident seat that's vacant.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager. I do have a question just to clarify. So this evening, we are agreeing, if we do, on how to fill the city resident positions. We're not picking the person. We're picking the way to get those people on the Budget Committee.
So by adopting the policy, that selection process is built into it in the resolution.
Right. So we are.
So if we adopt the policy, we have that selection process. And then Items Two and Three, Two would be selecting the second council member, which we would ask be done tonight. Item Three is selecting the community member, which we would ask be done tonight. And recall, even though the budget process is the ways out there, looking at that surplus was something that we were probably going to do early next spring, but something that could.
Sorry, just to jump in. I think, just to clarify, I think the confusion might be, it speaks to accepting applications. I don't.
Oh.
Right. And so I think then those applications would go, as you mentioned, to the City Treasurer. And, right, okay. So we're mostly asking the council to determine amongst yourselves who will be the designated from the council, and then to embark upon the process for the Mayor and the Treasurer to select somebody to come back for ratification. Am I getting that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And how are the applications? Is it advertised?
Yeah, the plan would be to advertise as we would for another committee or commission opening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council?
So, we're going to have public comment first, and then I have.
Well, these were questions, then we'll go to public comment. Do you have any questions for?
I'm going to wait till after public.
Okay. Yeah, I do. So in this appointment to this group, is it the same appointment process? I mean, in other words, can they be removed at will? Is it, you know, in other words, what actually happens if we decide that we want to remove the person? Just curious, not that we would decide that, but does this fall into the same model as a commission?
Yes, it would mirror the commission process currently.
Okay, thank you. So it's an appointment at will that can be withdrawn at will by a majority of council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That it? Okay, we will move on. Mayor Protem?
So, but in terms of selecting the community member, and we have one vacancy, is that going to follow the process where some council member, I mean, we don't, and we don't have a, we don't have a chairperson that would be involved? Or are we going to just do a majority vote of the council on nominating someone to be on the committee?
Well, so what we're suggesting is that you direct staff to embark upon the process wherein we would advertise and accept applications. The Mayor and the City Treasurer would review the received applications, come to some type of agreement as to who they would like to recommend. That individual then come back before the City Council for ratification. So it's a little bit different in that sense. It's similar, but this is kind of an unusual body.
So are we going to need a motion on that that specifies that that's the process of getting to the selection, or is that already baked into?
It's baked into the resolution. However, if you want to belt and suspend it, that's always fine. Okay.
Any other questions? And just one more reminder too about public comments. It's a special meeting, so public comments are only on the Budget Committee and the Code of Conduct. Okay, good. All right, we will go ahead and. I do have a question. Councilmember?
And we still get to see all the applications, just like we normally do.
I would think that would be the process. I hadn't thought that through, but I don't see any reason why. But what we're asking tonight is, council, accept that it is the City Treasurer and the Mayor who make a recommendation which comes back before you. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, so, not that I am espousing the idea, simply asking the question. Are there any, will there be a matrix of qualifications, or is it just, I mean, how, is there any process by which a good decision is made, i.e., is there a matrix? Are we looking for experience? Are we just, we're looking for somebody who's super interested? We're looking, what do we, how do we make this decision?
I would say, and it doesn't specifically call for it here this evening, that we're deferring to the good judgment of the City Treasurer and the Mayor for somebody who might be beneficial in an advisory capacity to the City Council and the City Manager. If you'd like to drill down that area, you can. This is a subjective determination, though.
Yeah, so just to follow up, so I think the question then becomes, are we looking for someone who has general sort of interest and maybe some experience in finance? Or are we looking for someone who can really figure out? I'm just trying, since their goal is also to evaluate potential programs or new programs or projects over a quarter of a million dollars, in some ways, it's a qualitative assessment, like this is a good project for Ojai, and this is a less good project for Ojai, but not necessarily this is a good project for Ojai, but it's five times as expensive as it should be. So I'm just trying to see.
What I would, if I could just jump in?
Yeah, please.
So it's going to be hard to find somebody with better experience than the City Council and the City Treasurer, simply because you're the most exposed to the process. And even if you have a finance background, municipal finance is unlike private sector finance. So we're a city of eight thousand people. It's not likely we're going to have a huge amount of local government finance experts out there. So what I would say, and this is true really of any commission appointment, the number one qualification is someone with good judgment. And that's, you know, we're asking them to look at this from the eyes of the community and just guide us. Ultimately, we want the City Council to make the budget decisions because you're the most informed on what's happening here, and, you know, you're the most in tune with your constituents.
Yes, and that sounds reasonable to me. One final question. We had a Budget and Finance Committee, Policy Committee, whatever it was, and somehow, on some line item somewhere, eight million dollars was there or not there that then bubbled up and was there. So that is, when people say that we're looking for oversight, I want to understand that we had all of these people in the room, and I don't know who knew that there was eight million dollars hidden and who didn't. So I want to try to figure out how we will, is that part and parcel of this particular role? Or is it, you know, is it not?
I would say no. I would say, you know, and not to be at odds. I would say that, you know, the additional money in reserve was always in the budget. It just wasn't as easily and readily available for information as it might have been.
Oh, yeah, no, I get it was in the budget. I get it was not in the budget.
You know, when I came on board and had some discussions, you know, with finance and with the Assistant City Manager, we just made a policy recommendation decision to really be very forthright with everything that was at your disposal. I would not see that type of thing as the Budget Committee's purview because that's really more of an audit-type exercise, and that's not the function of this committee. This committee is more big-picture expenditures and needs, that type of, you know, guidance as we move to put together the budget.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to public comment. First, we have Bill Miley, then John Buetti, then Renee Roth.
Hello. It's good to have this back, the Budget and Finance Committee. I fully support reestablishing this Budget and Finance Committee. Adding a second City Council Member is good. A second public member is also worthy and needed. I suggest the Mayor be the Chair. As to the number of meetings, it should be more than one, which that's listed in the resolution. It should be more than one. It seems important to meet prior to the mid-year budget report, meeting at the beginning of the new budget draft, and anytime a new budget item is proposed worth more than, in my money thinking, a hundred thousand dollars, not a quarter of a million. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have John Buetti, then Renee Roth.
Good evening, everyone. So this may be obvious, but I've just got a question. If the person selected from the City Council leaves before the end of their term, would the person who succeeds them automatically assume the position?
Thank staff, any?
Would you like us to field that question now, Mayor? I don't think that has been contemplated. I don't know if we have that spoken to in other sections of our code. So if you want to address that, you know, I think.
I would say, I would imagine that we would start the process over again because, just because the council member in that seat vacates office and a new person comes in, doesn't mean that the person who took the seat over is interested in being on the committee. And we would hope to fill the committee with council members, or not fill it, but put council members in committees that they're interested in serving on. So I believe we would open it up to the full council to make, to volunteer for that committee assignment.
Okay, all right. Thank you, John. We're still on public comment?
I want to make a comment. Wouldn't the, because it's titled Mayor, so wouldn't the Mayor position be different from the City Council? The Mayor would automatically?
Yeah, so the Mayor would. That seat, the City Treasurer would, but for the council member positions.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe the Mayor would look for interest from the council members to determine who would be nominated next.
Thank you. Next, we have Renee Roth.
Good evening, council. Let's see. I'm glad to see this is on the agenda and that you're taking action. I'm probably one of the few people in the room who was at the last Budget Committee meeting, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, when Betsy was there. And I did make some comments. I have been following local government budgeting for many years. I used to have a job of implementing financial management systems, local government financial management systems. I also issued municipal bonds for the state of Oregon in my past professional life. So following the money and the budget and the finances, something that I am interested in and have followed for the city for quite some time. The City Treasurer is the financial manager for the, by, and you manage the finances and the investments for the city. And I do not see the role of the City Treasurer being one that has to do with budget and finance. It's a different set of eyes. I used to work in the state of Oregon Treasurer's office. I know the Treasurer is investing state funds for PERS, for the retirement, for the employees. That's a different set of eyes. So I would recommend that you don't have the City Treasurer so much as maybe the City Manager and two council members as, because those are the people who are going to, you're going to work with more closely. And I think the City Manager should be a major decision-maker. And then, if I were to throw my hat in the ring for this spot, Betsy and I have had differences of opinion on several different issues in the city. And if it's a majority vote and everybody has to agree, I could see how she would definitely not want me to be on the Budget Committee, if you can all see my point. Now, you know, there are ways to move past differences, and I think it is possible, and it's time that we should. But I would hope that this isn't one of those positions where the Mayor has the deciding vote, and you have to get along with the Mayor in order to have a position on the Budget and Finance Committee. I would hope that that's not a restriction for this position. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. I'm still waiting for you to, I've asked you to go out for coffee many times, so whenever you're ready, I'm ready. Okay, let's go on. Any public comments online?
No, Mayor, there is no raised hands online.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. And let's take the staff's suggestion that we have three separate motions. So let's begin, you know, it's outlined in the staff report. First, we'll talk about the City Council Member, then about the system to appoint the city resident. And then, just one second, and then to adopt a resolution affirming.
Actually, so it'd be two actions. It'd be adopting the policy. And built into the policy, it's Section Five, it actually outlines the process to select the community member. So Action One would be adopt the policy, and the second action would be to appoint the council member.
And then if?
Then there would be no third. Then staff would be incumbent on staff to advertise.
Okay, so let's begin by talking about the policy, which includes how to appoint the city resident. Would anyone like to put a motion on the table to begin? Yep, Mayor Protem?
As I understood the instructions, aren't we to affirm that we want to continue with the Budget Committee? Or we already passed that?
Well, I think that's the policy, correct? By adopting the policy, we're affirming that we want to keep it.
By adopting this resolution, you would be affirming that we're establishing this commission under the terms outlined in the resolution, and that this process would move forward.
Okay, I move that we adopt the resolution to move forward with a Finance Budget Committee.
A second?
I'll second that, but a question that comes back for a second reading. Does this is any other resolution? No?
So only ordinances have second reading? So this would be effective tonight?
Okay, we will move on to public comment. Any comments before we vote? Yep.
Just one, so Bill Miley brought up a suggestion about moving it to a hundred thousand dollars instead of two hundred and fifty thousand. And I just wanted to see if anyone had any thoughts about that before we moved forward with this.
Could we have pros and cons on that?
Yeah.
Typically, these committees, they work in two ways. One of the advantages is having community members involved, is oftentimes there's some insight in the business community on some revenue expectations surrounding sales tax, DOT. That's helpful. The other side is the more large-scale programs and projects the city's looking at doing. And I can't really point to any significant project that would be a change in kind of where we're going with our budget that would be less than a quarter of a million dollars.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the clarity I needed for that.
Okay, any other comments from council? Councilmember Rule?
I was just trying to, this appointment is how long? I guess everybody has to check.
The term is in there.
I know it is. I just couldn't find it quickly enough.
Terms of resident members shall be for four years and shall serve until their successors have been appointed and qualified. And the resident members can serve for successive terms. The terms of city officials coincide with their respective offices.
And just to clarify.
Can we go through the chair? Are you finished?
I would just ask my fellow council members if there was any support for a two-year term versus a four-year term, just simply because this is new. We don't know how it's going to play out. And it would be easier to kind of figure it out and review in two years. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
For all offices or for just the resident or?
The residents, yeah. Okay, Mayor Protem?
As far as the City Council Member, I would have the understanding that when we make assignments at the beginning of the year, that the council member appointment would be one of those assignments that we vote on.
Oh, we're not doing it now?
Well, are you suggesting we don't do it tonight?
No.
So you're suggesting we don't do it tonight? Right, okay. Let's confirm. There's a double negative in there.
Yeah. My suggestion is that the, that we, that the method for selecting our City Council representative, not the Mayor, but the City Council representative, is that it is one of the annual appointments that we make. And even though we're late in the year, so whoever's appointment it is, but, you know, we're, if we got the right person for the job, then we reappoint them in January to continue in that spot.
So that we would appoint someone tonight, but this appointment would become one of the rotations that the council decides on in January in terms of appointments, like humane society. Okay, go on.
So I don't necessarily support that or not. What I was going to ask was, and I think, are we getting ahead of ourselves? Like this is part, I was going to ask who the current council wants to be the council member?
But that's a separate question. This right now is just the policy. What, how the policy is formed.
So right now, the motion on the floor is whether or not you're going to move forward with this committee in the first place and adopt the resolution. If y'all decide, yes, we're going to adopt the resolution, then we would pick a council, why we, I mean, royal we, you. Question number two is you would pick the council member to move forward or whatever the term.
So this is premature.
Well, so one of the terms in the resolution is how long each of the members serve. And that's, that's what's being discussed right now.
And I was responding to a comment about how long the term should be for appointments.
Through the mayor?
Okay, and one option was council member rule, I think the two years because that coincides with the mayor.
My understanding of what council member rule suggestion was is to change the resident member to two years. And then the mayor pro tem suggested that the council member term is moved to the annual appointments. So that would mean that you would appoint someone for the rest of the year if you decide to adopt this committee. And then come January, when you decide or when the council decides what the appoint, the committee assignments are. A decision would be made at that time for who participates in this committee.
So, and basically you don't foresee having a budget committee meeting in November or December. So we don't, I mean, it seems really weird to appoint somebody for two months and then possibly change it. And then that makes, and basically removing it to, toward the next council instead of taking responsibility now. That's how I, how I see it.
Just one sec. Mayor pro tem, would you accept the suggestion from councilmember rule as a friendly amendment?
Thank you.
For a two-year?
Yeah, for a two-year.
Two-year appointment for, as opposed to a four-year appointment, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, just to remind, we have a motion, we have a second. And it sounds like we're all in agreement that we would like to get this going, the finance and budget committee. So let's go ahead and call the question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lang. Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Okay, we will go to the second part of the agenda item, the appointment of the council member. And I would like to make a motion to appoint councilmember Lang to the budget committee. Councilmember, okay, thank you. Councilmember Lang is very diplomatic, listens very well, has her a business of your own and you've always expressed a lot of interest in the business community and helping diversify our economy. So I really appreciate your efforts as well as your interests.
Was there anyone else that wanted this, to be in this role that's currently on the council and is not leaving in December?
Thank you for throwing that my way. Councilmember Francina, because at one point I did express interest in being on the budget and finance committee. But that interest has died and I, and quite honestly, I completely and 100% trust and support councilmember Lang for that position. Complete trust in her in that position. So I have no interest in it and fully support my colleague to the right.
Thank you. Councilmember Lang?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you all for your confidence and you, I think you all know how much this means to me, that economic diversification is really important to me and working with our business community is as well. And I'm really looking forward to, if, if the vote passes, I would really do give this my all. So, thank you.
Thank you for your dedication. All right, we're ready for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Okay, we will move on to our second item, councilmember code of conduct and ethics. And we have a staff report from our assistant city attorney, Taylor Anderson. And I just first want to thank Taylor for all your hard work on this. This is your specialty and your baby and I'm really grateful to our council and staff for bringing this forward. And I think it's a really wonderful step forward for our whole community.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. Yes, so we're bringing this item forward at council's request. I have a presentation to cover what we're going to talk about tonight. So I just want to preface before we get started that this is a really important tool for a successful council. And really anybody who has to work together to accomplish a goal by having an agreements on how you are going to communicate with each other and how you're going to operate and being clear about what those terms are is so valuable. And really, successful councils have this tool. And so I will cover what we worked on. So next slide, please. Or is there a clicker? Sorry, Bridget. Okay, so no, we're good. So city council directed staff to provide a first draft of the code of ethics and that's what we're talking about tonight. And it was required to include proactive transparency measures. City attorney's office specifically, mostly me. I got to get to know all of you. We had listening sessions with each of the council members and the mayor to when we started this effort, I was the new kid in town. I, it was my first project that I got to work on with all of you. And it was such a great opportunity to get to know each of you individually. I will say on this point, what I know to be absolutely true, above all else. Little feelings coming out. No, it's I work with a lot of people and I can tell you that this council just cares to the very core of their being. And sometimes you care really loudly at each other, but you do care. And this community cares a lot and what we have in Ojai is very special. And it's really, really cool for me to be a part of that as a person who I'm, I love government. I have chosen to serve in government. And so it's really fun for me to get to work on things like this with you and all of the different projects. So I just would like to acknowledge that here. Ojai is a very special place. I don't say that to all my cities, so please don't tell them. You know, and I, y'all have more in common than I think that it feels like sometimes. So this code includes common values and norms that were identified by all of you. And some of them are required by law. You know, I can't help it as an attorney, we got to slip those ones in there. We intentionally formatted these as we statements. This model is known as something that I'm totally blanking on right now, community agreements, sorry. Community agreements, you are the community here, we statements, as a body, you take ownership. I dreamt about this one and thought about it late at night. It was very important, I think, to frame this in we because you act as a body, you don't act as individuals, even though each of you as an individual, your values and beliefs make up the council. As a whole, you are the decision maker. There we go. I found this really cool tool. So I took a lot of notes of all the things that you said when we had listening sessions. And the words that are in giant blue are words that came up the most frequently. And then going darker blue came up next and then it would be the light green. And you can see here, like I said, I think you all have a lot more in common than what you realize. And the things that are important to you are consistent. And so I wanted to make this word map to show you where those, where those things intersect and the common themes that were coming up. So an overview of how this is formatted, we're going to talk about public interest, transparency, impartiality, civility and respect, effectiveness and efficiency, commitment to the democratic process, conflict resolution, confidentiality, public resources and accountability. So public interest, we act for the common good, not personal or private interest. This one is founded in the law. I think it's also really important to recognize that what we all do here in this space is a public service. It, public's the first word in it because we're here for the community. Everything that we do is for their benefit. Every decision that we make, every dollar that we spend, that is what this is about. And if we are not acting in the public good and we're not making spaces that the public can come and tell us what they think, we are not doing a good job, right? So creating a space where we're making decisions for their benefit, they know that we're making those decisions for their benefit and not for ourselves. So we make the public feel welcome and are not partial, prejudiced or disrespectful towards the public. This is a big one. If they're not willing to tell us what they think, how are we possibly going to make decisions about what will serve them? If, trying to think of an example. If nobody in town has dogs, which I know is a really silly suggestion. But if nobody in town has dogs, why would we open a dog park? Right? And it's those kinds of things of like, hearing from the community is very important. And so the way that we communicate with each other in the community is making sure that they feel welcome to not only email us to come forward in public comment. It's not arguing with them than when they come to the dais. It's being an active listener. So active listening is making eye contact when they come to the dais. It's not being on your phone when people say things that we don't like. Obviously, things happen where you need to be on your phone, but being a good listener, being an active listener and showing them that, you know, we care. We follow all relevant laws. Again, the legal thing, sorry, I got to slip it in there. We follow the relevant laws and regulations to the public officials, including those related to public meetings, financial disclosures and conflicts of interest. This is a no-brainer. It's the Brown Act, it's the Political Reform Act, it's all, it's all the things that we covered in the AB 1234 presentation. Okay, so transparency, there's Ralph Brown again. So we conduct public meetings and make decisions per the Brown Act to ensure accessibility to the public. So everything happens out in the open. We're not making secret decisions. Things that happen in closed session are supposed to be in closed session. And we are being transparent about the reasons that we make decisions. We notice meetings appropriately, which partially is staff, but we work together to produce a Brown Act meeting. We clearly explain the rationale, considerations, data and any outside influences behind our positions and decisions. This one came up a few times in my discussions with you, that transparency about where you're getting your information and how you are getting to your decision is really important for a lot of the council members. So you know, I read an article in the New York Times, yada, 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 yada. I went to a community meeting and that community meeting really, I heard public comment and we had a discussion with the public and it really informed my decision. You know, so being transparent about why, you know, I come from a home, yeah, I don't know. I come from a home where this was a problem, right? You don't have to share personal things, but being just transparent about your experiences and why you are making the decisions that you're, you're getting. You're making, sorry. There we go. Okay, impartiality. So we don't use our official positions to influence government decisions, which we have material financial interests or a personal relationship. This is a legal one. This is from the Political Reform Act and a few other of the conflict of interest laws. So we covered it in the AB 1234. It goes back to the reason that those rules are in place is so that we're making decisions for the public benefit and not for our own benefit. And we're being transparent about them and recusing when's necessary to avoid conflicts of interest. We refuse gifts or favors that could compromise or appear to influence our judgment. Again, this one is good practice and required by law. You don't want to do anything, you don't want to give anything to someone that wants something from you and you don't want to take anything. Though, I'm sorry, I said it backwards. You don't want to give anything to someone that you want something from and you don't want to take anything from someone that wants something from you. Right? So we don't want our decisions to be tainted by the presents and favors that we're getting, right? Well, of course, councilmember so-and-so approved that permit on appeal. They get massages at that parlor twice a week, right? And I know they get free ones sometimes because they go there so often, right? We don't want that kind of public perception to cloud the decisions that you're making. We ensure fair hearings by allowing parties the opportunity to present their case, to respond to evidence, to be heard without bias. This is me, I'm sorry, sneaking in due process. It's a really important part of what you do is to sit as a fair decision maker who's unbiased. Where you wait to make a decision until you come to this dais and you hear all the information and then you make a decision. You're not making a decision before you get here based off the court of public opinion or based on hearing from only one side only, right? So it's disclosing ex parte contacts, it's recusing yourself if necessary, it's at least allowing the parties to respond. And I'm not going to go too far. It like, my mind made it move forward. Too far? Okay, we did it. All right, civility and respect. This is a big one. This is Robert and his rules, this is Rosenberg and his rules, this is the cornerstone of a efficient and productive meeting. The way I, we talked about this in the AB 1234 training, about not attacking staff and not attacking each other and the consequences of doing that. I won't rehash all of that, but I will note here that where we have a space where there's conflict, a few things happen. One, kids in this community and the youth are not going to be encouraged to participate in government and participate with the council, which is really disheartening. We need our youth to want to grow up, to engage with government, to trust government and to participate in government because that's how this whole system works, right? It's really hard on staff, right? It doesn't just affect council. When council is having a hard time, it affects all of us. It is really draining. It's very stressful to have a council who is at odds with each other. And it's very stressful to have a commission that's at odds with each other and that attacks staff or even attacks the public. And that goes to the last piece of civility and respect with each other is a trickle-down effect. You set the tone for how the community treats staff and how the community treats you and we treat each other. So you're sending a message that treating each other with aggression and name-calling and not having a civil discussion about what our differences are is okay. And it's not okay, right? That's not a fun space to be in. It's not productive. It's really, really hard to come to a consensus when people are raising voices, when we're getting angry. You can have a difference of opinion. You should have a difference of opinion. That is what democracy is. But there's a way to have a difference of opinion where you're not hurting each other and hurting the community. When I was younger, my birth mom told me a story of putting nails in a fence. And this little boy said mean things. And every time he said a mean thing, his dad made him put a nail on the fence. And then he made him go and take all the nails out. And he's like, okay, make the fence hole again. And he's like, I can't do that. The best you can do is patch it. The fence will never be the same if you continue to put holes in it. So if you can find a way to not put the nail in there in the first place and work together as a group, we can be a lot more productive in making decisions for this community and getting, we got a lot of really cool stuff to get done, right? And I just, I can't say enough good things about the stuff that's in the works, the stuff the city manager team is working on and all of the departments and staff just really cares. really cares about driving things forward. But if things get stuck at the dais and they can't move forward, you know, we can't do all those cool things, and that, for lack of a better word, that's a bummer. There we go. Okay, so with that, we focus on discussions on issues, not personal conflicts. It's not about people, it's about the issues, it's not about personal attacks. We're talking about, you know what, I really think that council members should only serve for two years on this committee. Okay, well, I don't like the color of your shirt, right? That doesn't have to do with what we're talking about, right? It's really important, you know what, I really disagree. I think it's important that we have a fresh perspective every year on this, it should be one year, right? You know what, I think it should, I think the experience and the value of being on the committee for four years is super important, and you really don't understand a committee until you've been in it for a couple of years. So, I think something different. That's okay, it's okay to have a difference of opinion, it's not okay to attack each other. Again, piggybacking on that idea, we prioritize effective council functioning over personal differences. It's not about you, it's about this community, and prioritize the way that you speak to each other to, so that we can come to a decision, so that things can move forward or staff can get direction to fix it. We communicate respectfully during public meetings on social media, in the media, and all other times by avoiding personal attacks, derogatory remarks, interrupting others, using profanity, and raising our voices. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but for all the aforementioned reasons, right? It trickles from the top. How you treat each other is how the community will treat you, and how the community will treat each other and staff. And then we allow all community members to express their opinion before a decision is reached. This is really important, I've, in my experience, on bodies where the intensity can be raised, you have less of an opportunity for the council members who aren't going to elbow their way in and fight their way into the discussion. Not everybody is like that, so, making space for all viewpoints to be heard. Not everybody is willing to force their way in, right? And they shouldn't have to. You should be allowed to be an introvert and be on the council, right? You should be able to raise your hand like everybody else and have your, an opportunity for your viewpoint to be heard. Mm-hmm. Oh, that worked. Okay, effectiveness and efficiency. Above all else, be efficient, right? You're, I, I say this too much, but bureaucracy at its finest, like, we want to be an efficient government, we want to be able to serve the community efficiently, and some of that comes with council making efficient decisions and having efficient meetings. I know I can speak personally that after a certain point in the day, my brain stops working, so, the longer the meetings go, right? The less likely it is for everybody to be at their best. So, having an efficient meeting, I think, is a very, very important part of your job. But that is a team effort to pull that off, and with not only you, but with staff. So, we seek common ground, build a consensus, and develop solutions that serve the community. We avoid repeating previous points and building on prior discussions, acknowledge that the point was made, and move on. This next idea is trash or treasure. Well, the whole thing's trash or treasure, I hope you treasure it, because I worked real hard on it and I dreamt about you in this code of conduct for quite a long time. So, I feel quite strongly, and in my experience, that adding formality to your process would be beneficial for you. You don't have to add it in this way, my recommendation is to limit the time that council members speak to five minutes, you could also do three minutes, because that's what the public is offered. So, you get five minutes at a time from an unlimited amount of times to queue up. You can waive the provision by majority of the council, you give priority to members who haven't spoken yet, and you have to all be recognized by the chair. So, however you slice this, however you do it, I think formality would be really helpful. Formality, I think, I'm going to back up. Y'all know each other, I've seen that time and time again. This town is very, very close-knit, and so, it's, I think it's easy to be comfortable with each other, and that informality sometimes can lead to problems in the discussion. By allowing everybody their time to speak, it gives space to all ideas without interruptions, it allows for all viewpoints to be heard, it allows the chair or the mayor to control the meeting, so, if a couple council members have queued up, you know what? Council member Mara, we haven't heard from you this evening, could you share your thoughts on the matter? And giving spa, like, love it. Five stars. It allows, it allows for that space and for pause, right? And then you get your time to speak. Yes, council member Francina.
I want to wait till you finish your train of thought on effectiveness and efficiency, and then I want to make a request.
Okay, sure. So, again, with the formality, Rosenberg's rules is a tool, Robert's rules is a little cumbersome, but Robert, Rosenberg's rules, same idea, right? By having motions, by everything going through the chair, it allows for an efficient meeting, it allows for space, space for all the viewpoints to be heard. And I think, in my experience seeing meetings, space is something that this council has difficulty with. So, if you adopt everything, I would really encourage, anything, I would encourage you to be more formal in the way that you conduct meetings and respect that formality. I think it would be very helpful for you to add civility in the space where sometimes we feel very passionate about a decision that's being made, and because we feel so strongly about it, civility goes missing. Council member Francina.
I, I would like, this is the fifth point, and I would like to just pause for a moment, and first of all, you know, normally, we hear the staff presentation, and it's already a lot to absorb, and then we don't ask questions until after public comment. But so much was said, I, I would like permission to comment for a minute or two before I leave, because I, I can't, it's hard for my brain to move on.
Oh, okay.
Until I've said something about this. So, first of all, on the point of the public interest, to my way of, first, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with these ideals, okay? But I also want to bring it about, talk about real life, okay? And the public, to my way of thinking, the public interest is not just the current public, but the future public.
Yes.
And the current public may vehemently disagree with what we think is best for the future public. I just want to raise that as a, you know, an item to pause, to think about. And then, the, the thing about, all of these points, of course, are totally connected. The point on impartiality, yes, it's, it's clear that we shouldn't be taking gifts from the, from the public and have obligations, but reality is completely different because, and I've experienced this in a fairly, I would even characterize it as a traumatic way, okay? We're supposed to come to the meetings without our mind being made up, but in reality, we all, you know, most of us are sitting here because we have a campaign team, and we have donations that are public, you can look them up. When we start getting $20,000 to sit here, you know, that's just on average now, in order to win a seat in certain elections, you have to spend a lot of money, and you have a whole team of people, and they expect you for the next four years to abide by your original platform. And if during one of the meetings, you change your mind, and it's different from what, you know, they discussed with you a few hours ago, all hell can break loose. And I, I don't know how else to say it, in reality, you are, that are, this council feels a sense of, of being beholden to a certain group of people. It's very hard, you know, as you sit here, you know, and I, I, I know that, I, I hope to think that I have changed in the 12 years that I've served, and that I can be independent, but it is, it's, I don't know the solution, but it is a problem when you, campaign donations are not considered illegal gifts, but yet...
You are required to recuse if a decision comes before you. No, you're required to recuse if a decision comes before you and you've received more than $250 in campaign contributions.
Can I interrupt for a second, though? I do feel like we're veering into discussion, so, can we wait till the end of the presentation, and then we'll take public comment?
Yes, I requested that we veer into this discussion, because so much was said that is ideal, but it's not, doesn't match with reality necessarily, but I can, I can, I think I, I, I've said enough. You know, I think that, I just want to acknowledge the reality of being beholden, you know, when you first, especially when you're new to a certain, to the people that put you in office. And that's, that's not just here, it's statewide, it's national. It's just, you know, that's why we have corruption in government.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, you want to continue? Thank you, council member.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
I just would like to acknowledge, though, even though it's hard, it's still your responsibility as a public official to do those things.
I agree wholeheartedly.
And find a way forward. The timing impeccable, commitment to the democratic process. We respect majority decisions, even if they differ from our personal views. I know that can be hard, when we feel so strongly about decisions that are made, when we're so closely connected to the community, but not taking decisions personally when they don't go our way. We actively listen to and consider all viewpoints and contributions with respect, it's not talking over each other, it's allowing everybody to be heard. This idea appears a few times in a few different ways. There we go. Conflict resol, we're almost done, I promise. Conflict resolution, we prevent, prevent conflicts from escalating and affecting operations or relationships, we resolve conflicts through dialogue, mediation, or other means. Something I want to know also about all of these things, these are skills. They're not always things that come to us naturally, but they are things that we can get better at. This is a muscle, it is a muscle you can exercise. Preventing conflicts is one of, one of the quads, right? It's one of the bigger ones, it's one of the more important ones, same thing with resolving conflicts in a civil manner. Confidentiality, we handle confidential information with care, ensuring it's only used for its intended purpose and protected from unauthorized disclosure. This appears in the law a couple times over. You're not allowed to use confidential information you gain by, as a public official for a pecuniary interest, meaning you get money from it. You also, closed session, what happens in closed session stays in closed session. It's like Vegas. Public resources, we don't use public resources, including staff time, equipment, or funds for personal, political, or private gain. This is a huge, huge no-no, the consequences under the law, I think it's three times the cost of the illegal use, and there's a few other very serious consequences. Accountability, this is a big one for you as a group. You're all responsible individually and collectively for holding yourselves and each other accountable to the code. That means you, you yourself, hold yourselves to the code, and when, not weaponizing, but holding each other accountable. Hey, we agreed that we weren't going to use bad words. Please don't use bad words. We agreed we were going to let all viewpoints to be heard, right? Calling each other in a very respectful way. Violations will be, whoop! This mouse is like, very sensitive, I'm sorry. So, violations are outlined in the ordinance, they're not in the code, that was intentional. I wanted the code to be something that is set apart from the resolution itself. There we go. There we go. Okay. So, enforcement, I'm going to pause here. You, as council members, have very little that you can do to each other if something goes wrong. And that is because you are put into these jobs by the people of the city, the only way you can be taken out of this job is by the people of the city. That is the ultimate punishment, is recall. Or you can choose to vacate your seat. These tools are things that we've used in other jurisdictions, they're not, they're not very robust, because you don't really have a ton of power over each other. I'm going to be honest with you, this is tantamount to public shaming and taking away cool stuff that you get to do as a council member. That is really what the council can control. We have other jurisdictions that we work in. I joke, we took everything but one of the council member's ties, and he's still acting a fool, so, and he's still in office, nobody's recalled him, so, you can use these tools, but they are very limited. What's important is that you hold each other accountable, and we don't weaponize these And, and, and turn this into something that it shouldn't be, this is something to be productive, but any two council members can request an agenda item about enforcement if they believe that another council member has violated these rules. You have to include the specific charges the discipline is based on and supporting evidence in the staff report. The agenda item can choose three courses of action, initiate a discussion of a council member conduct and the council expectations, proposed council protocols be clarified, maybe the rule wasn't good, maybe we need to do better and clarify what we meant when we said the thing, maybe we found a hole in it, that happens sometimes when we write codes. Or propose, propose initiation of a disciplinary action. Whoever the council member is, is subject to the enforcement, has an opportunity for rebuttal. They'll receive a copy of the agenda item within 10 business days. You can address the matter, they may address the matter in writing at the council meeting or both, and then any written materials must be published in the agenda packet no later than 72 hours before the meeting. At a discussion, so at the public meeting, council has to review the complaint in term, in a public meeting, if alleged conduct violated the code intentionally and repeatedly. And then if a majority votes for sanctions, any council member can make a motion to overturn the vote, to impose sanctions, majority vote of the council present can remove the vote from the record. If not overturned, the vote's part of the administrative record. Motion to overturn to, the vote to impose sanction has to be taken at the same meeting that the vote was made. So, sanctions, like I said, you can have a fu, a formal cen, been talking for a long time, a formal censure, formal censure is really a public acknowledgement that someone has done something wrong and, and they need to stop, right? Makes the public aware, makes the council member aware. You can, loss of current committee assignments and or bar from future committee appointments with the cit, within the city or other agencies, restrictions on travel, which may include, you can't, you get your travel request denied, limitations on the types of official travel will be authorized. And there she is again, my little bit of energy, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson, much appreciated. Do you want to take questions now?
You know what, let, let's let the public, I have a feeling that we are going to get into a discussion, so if you wouldn't mind, could we take public comment first and allow the public to speak, and then council can ask questions, because I think it will trickle into a discussion.
Okay. Okay, let's, we'll begin with Jessie Austin, then Andy Gilman, and then JoJo Caitlet? Kit, Cat yet? Sorry. Caitlet? Catlet, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessie Austin, and I have lived in this valley for over 30 years. I'm here tonight to speak about ethics. Per the administrative report from city manager Ben Harvey and assistant city attorney Taylor Anderson, quote, "Council members' actions and decisions significantly affect the community's trust and effective governance of the city." This report also states that, quote, "Transparency, civility, and ethical conduct are indispensable to the effective functioning of the city council." Given these statements by our city employees and council members, I am shocked and disappointed by the recent changes being made to the Recreation Department in a closed-session meeting. Your code of conduct states that you, quote, "Clearly explain the rationale, considerations, data, and any outside influences behind your positions and decisions." Yet, major changes are being made to a cornerstone program in our Yet major changes are being made to a cornerstone program in our community, Ojai Valley Gymnastics, without any clear explanation or data provided to the people affected by this. It is my understanding that these decisions were made after you were provided false background information that was not properly vetted by the city council or the city manager before decisions were made. This is irresponsible and dangerous and does not instill trust in our local government. And so, quote, "Whereas the purpose of a Code of Conduct and Ethics is to assure that councilmembers, while exercising their office, conduct themselves in a manner that will instill public confidence and trust in the fair operation and integrity of the city, I urge you to clearly show us, your constituents, the reasoning behind this very detrimental decision, and to ensure that any future decision-making that affects hundreds of children and their families is given ethical treatment of issues that impact them. And bring back the Parks and Rec Commission immediately." Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Next, we have Andy Gilman, then JoJo Catlet, and then William Wyrick.
Hello, council and staff, Andy Gilman. I totally support this, I'm really, really behind it and happy to see it. At some point, it would be interesting to get, I'm suggesting, some public comment if it's approved and, and goes forward, just a chance for the public to maybe fill in any blanks that haven't been thought of, that's just a suggestion. And then I thought, once it does get published, there could be reminders at meetings and even some printouts in the back for people, as, as this becomes our norm. And then, this is a minor point, but it's 5.2, and that is repeating content. So I'm, I'm saying two, that's the second bullet point of number five. And what I have noticed, I don't have it in front of me, but it's basically repeating arguments that have already been made. I've noticed, it seems we've gotten in the habit of, when the consent item comes on an ordinance, when someone wasn't happy with the vote, they bring it out of consent and the whole conversation happens over again without new information. So it seemed like possibly an abuse of consent, but anyway, I wonder if this 5.2 addresses that? That's sort of a question. And then I thought, whoever drafted things on the back table, there were a couple of interesting additions you might consider when you think of your final that were there. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we have JoJo Catlet, then William Wyrick, and then Bill Miley.
I'm going to fumble, but bear with me. I appreciate this meeting tonight. I'm fully in favor of adopting the Code of Ethics presented. I think currently, this is an important thing to adopt because it's my understanding that recently, the city council met to discuss a private memorandum to phase out our local gymnastics program in closed session. I read the memorandum presented by Matt Davis and Mr. Harvey, and there were obvious falsities that were discussed in the memo. It's unacceptable, in my opinion, to hold a meeting behind closed doors discussing how to shut down our program without community input. It seems dishonest, lacks transparency, and I believe there's a need to reestablish the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee because I think that's an ethical aspect of our city governance that has been dismantled. I have spoken with several people who have submitted applications to serve on the Rec Commission council, and none of them have heard back. At the beginning of this ethics presentation, something that was mentioned stuck out very strongly to me. Proactive transparency. As a community member, I feel deeply like this council was not transparent to your community. The meeting did not feel like it accommodated or benefited the public's interest. There is a want, there is a want for a local gymnastics program, and for some reason, you are meeting in closed session to take that away from our children. Thank you.
Thank you, JoJo. Next, we have William Wyrick, and then Bill Miley, and then Jessica Omish. Thank you, Jessica.
I think by example, we have, I'd like to provide what I think is a hole in this enforcement mechanism. You recall that referendum are possible within a certain time period with a certain percentage of registered voters to challenge an ordinance passed by this council if the community as a whole feels the council as a whole has not behaved in the community interest. That's built into our ordinance, into our ordinances, built into state law, I believe. Similar in this situation, we have by example, a decision made by the five of you, apparently, which anybody can read, the, you know, the California League of California Cities' guidelines on the use of pending or potential litigation exemption to the Brown Act, which states, "The purpose of 54956.9 is to permit the body to receive legal advice and make litigation decisions only. It is not to be used as a subterfuge to reach non-litigation-oriented policy decisions." Arguably, the public may read this, see the actions that have been revealed in the press, and believe that, what is the avenue for citizens to challenge a policy decision arguably made in closed session that people think shouldn't have been done that way? Perhaps something to add to the enforcement mechanism is a percentage of registered voters, like can challenge an ordinance, a percentage of registered voters to at least get it on the agenda, if not a single councilperson wanted to put it on the agenda to discuss the situation. Because as you know, the remedy for a Brown Act violation is to vacate the action and start over. That's the most common remedy. Second of all, I think that the introduction of the proposed additions to ethics documents have to do a lot with definitions of speech and judgments as to what's accurate, misleading, representations, et cetera. I think it reflects an ongoing failure to understand the essential absolutist nature of our constitutional republic's First Amendment. And therefore, I think that if you're going to include something like this that basically pretty much amounts to a speech code, that you only do that with a censure vote of a supermajority, rather than a simple majority, because of that importance of our First Amendment in our constitutional republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Jessica, and then Rebecca Mc- Thank you, McMonahan, thank you, Rebecca.
Hello. Interesting, I'm the only one on the comment page today other than this unauthorized, or unauthored proposed additions to ethic document. That's really interesting because I thought you all, you always had to author something that went on the comment page of the website for a city council meeting. So here it is. And it seems to me that it should have been published 72 hours ago, not today, and not presented to the public tonight. This council and commissioners have recently experienced ethic training, as I understand. This attorney-presented code seems as if it is brand-new. I don't see it as being brand-new. We've had ethics and codes for years. In fact, in the foyer of the old city council chambers, there's a poster up there that says Code of Ethics or Code of Conduct. It's good that we're having this as a re-adopted, updated Code of Ethics. I do not see it as new. I would like to see this put together in one complete document, presented again to the city council, made available on the website to all the people in the city of Ojai before it's adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Jessica, and then Rebecca.
Thank you for holding a meeting regarding ethics. I support the council and all city employees adopting Code of Ethics. I just wish that it were retroactive. Children and youth were mentioned not wanting to engage in, participate in, or trust local government. The majority of you sitting here in front of me tonight have spoken on the record of the importance of transparency. However, our youth are currently being negatively impacted by a recent lack of ethics, potential Brown Act violations, excuse me, that are against the public's best interest, transparency, and impartiality. They also lack democratic norms. I hope to see less closed-door meetings and secret memorandums that prevent the public from commenting on issues that affect them. I hope the city council, the city manager, and the park manager adopts a Code of Ethics that are in the true spirit of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Rebecca.
I'm not prepared for this. I just wanted to bring up something that happened today. It was like two and a half, three hours ago. And I live next to Daly Park on White Oak, as Betsy knows, and Rachel. We've had a problem with dogs off-leash. We've had some animals that have been killed, cat, two chickens, and somebody who's been bitten. It's really hard to enforce it, there are signs posted all over. But, you know, if you see one person with your dog off-leash, everybody kind of joins in, you know? And it, you know, looks fine. You can visit with your friends and your dogs run around. But I ran into Leslie. I have, at different times over the last year, two years, I approached Betsy, and I talked to Rachel about it because they come with their dogs. And they were very understanding and kind. We talked about, you know, Ojai needs to build a dog park in the city limits, just different things we could do. And I approached Leslie because she had her dog out there barking, and she was madly trying to do yes on zero signs. And I asked her to put her dog on a leash. Well, first I just said, you know, you have to have your dog on a leash. And she said, no. I said, it's a law. She said she didn't care, and she just didn't have time to even talk about it. Now, I live right there, her dog was barking at her, and she was totally, she was so rude to me. I wasn't rude to her. I went up and I asked her, I mean, she could have said, I'm just going to be here for a minute, or she could have put her dog on a leash, she could have said, you know, nice to meet you, you live in Ojai, I've been here for 65 years. And she was completely rude. I had to call the police finally, and then she left. But I just want to say that she's the rudest person, and I know, nobody will say it, you have to work with her, but I'm sure she's like that with people she works with and her family. And anyone else that disagrees with her, she's just a terrible person. And I don't think you should be able to talk to someone like that and say it's okay to break the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Any comments online, Ms. Mara?
No, Mayor, there are no comments online.
Okay, so we will-
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, there is one. Steve Colome. Go ahead, Steve.
Had to change the, the audio setting. I'm not there because I'm still recovering from surgery. I just wanted to say that this was one of the best presentations that I have heard by our Assistant City Attorney. It was very clear, extremely well-developed, and I want to congratulate her and the staff for an outstanding presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That's it? Okay, we will move on to discussion, and before we start, I would just-
Excuse me.
I'm going to finish, and then you can go. I would just like to say, once again, thank you to Ms. Anderson, and I really love your metaphor about don't put nails in the fence. So as we move forward in council, in discussion, let's do our best to focus on policy and not personality. And, you know, we all love Ojai, we want to do the best for Ojai, so let's work on the best Code of Conduct for Ojai that we can, we can do, so. Yes, Councilmember?
To respond to the public comment very briefly, I apologize. You came at me like with the most negative energy I have ever felt. My dog was barking because you were sitting there talking to me. There was a dog there off-leash. I realize now that you guys have changed, but Daly has always been a lot of dogs off-leash. I rarely go there. You know, so you called me a B.I.T.C.H. You said you were going to call the police. You know, I was as passive-aggressive as I could possibly be. I never said a word to you except for go ahead and do it. And the other thing I said to you was, I do not believe that humans are the only ones that have the right to freedom. That was my response to you as to why my dog was not on a leash. I did not say anything else to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're going to, we're going to-
Okay, everybody, this is not- This is not a good way to start the discussion on the Code of Conduct. So everybody in the room, we're going to take a deep breath together at the same time, okay? And I'm going to count to three, and everybody is going to breathe in, okay? Ready? One, two, three, and then breathe out. One, two, three. We are going to reset, wipe the slate clean, and we're going to have a discussion on the Code of Conduct for this council and stay on the agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
I will sing, I, I promise you, I will sing if we get into bickering. I don't want to have to get there. So let's, let's keep civility, let's keep things on point, okay?
Thank you very much. All right, who would like to begin talking about the Code of Conduct?
I think you should be Mayor. Really? You're running meetings. You're great.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Before I make my comments, I want to, I want to make a comment for those who came here to talk about the Parks and Rec and the gymnastics issues. There is going to be a public hearing, and, you know, everything's on the table at that public hearing, and you'll get the chance to fully discuss with your council what your interests are, and we'll explain to the best of our ability where we are. And so I, I don't think that anybody who was in the closed-session meeting that we had was under the impression that we were deciding, you know, permanent things. And I can't even recall why we were in closed session. But the fact of the matter is, is that I don't think there's ill will on the part of anybody-
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, respectfully, if we could, if we could move on. I think, I think it's okay to note, there will be a public hearing. It's scheduled on the 19th, if we could focus on the agenda item at hand. I don't want to get into a discussion about something.
I'm just going to repeat that, the November 19th, so please come. Okay, good. Okay, all right. So, council, let's stick to the Code of Conduct and comments on that.
So I propose some additions that I would like people to review. I know that it was sent to the council. Mr. Miley, this was sent to the council. I wanted to, I was proposing this during my discussion item. And, you know, the one thing, and I would like the council to look at this, the one thing that I didn't see, I saw a lot of ambiguity. I saw, you know, you have to do something for the public good. Well, all I need to believe is that I'm doing it for the public good. You know, so there was a lot of ambiguity in a lot of what was said here. All I need to do is just simply state that I'm, you know, doing it for the public good. And I can go through instances where, to me, it just, all I need to do is just claim that it's this or it's that. But what you can't get away from is what is true and honesty. You know, so, you know, truthful and honest, that, that to me was something that's fundamental. And when Mayor Betsy and I first had a conversation about what was really important to us, you know, I, I think that I said truth and honesty was the most important thing to me. And in, quite honestly, I'm less concerned about how it is couched, although I think that it's very nice to be nice. But it's not nice to, to, you know, say what, say an untruth in a nice way, right? I mean, that's my problem here, is there's nothing that's- that says, I will be honest. And I could go through many, many, many written examples of things that were said that were not honest. And there was no way to call anybody on them because it's not a value that appears anywhere, right? I mean, you do, you can't, you can't mischaracterize events or people, you know, without deliberately, you know? Um, and so to me, I, I absolutely feel the need for something that says truth and honesty. Um, like I said, you know, these last two years, we could go through a, an unlimited number of examples where things were not truthful and they were not honest. Um, and likewise, as far as, you know, media use and public communication, I think it's really important that we decide whether or not, um, you know, we can allow those close to us and associated with us to go online and to fame and demean and without any responsibility for, you know, the actual council person. I think that's really, really, maybe we decide, you know, eh, that's their First Amendment right? A partner or a spouse can go online, they can say anything they want. Um, or maybe we say, you know, if I can prove, if I can tell you that it's defamation or that it's untrue, um, then the council member or has, has the responsibility to, um, discuss that, to, to, you know, try to remedy that situation. We have a lot of that. That's why I think what's, what council member Francina was saying is that, um, you know, there's, there's very high-level language, but the actual practicality of what's happening here and on the dais is also something that we should, um, we should take into account. Like, I really think we have to have truth and honesty. You have to tell the truth, right? You can't call somebody something. You can't say something that's not true, right? That, cause, that can be validated. I think you need to be called out on it. So that's why I, um, propose these two additions. Um, and I think they're important. I think they're really, really important.
Um, let's take council member Lang.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Riley, you're not eligible. But I would like to acknowledge your comment that you made earlier. So this document was a made available to the public when it was made available to the council. So the public received it at the same time that the council did, which is what's required by the Brown Act. Uh, council member Leslie ruled it. We do have, um, we had some technology issues later, but we will look into correcting the public comment to make clear that it, it is represented online, that it's council member rule. No, that was a technology issue on staff's part?
Well, that's a violation of our-
Okay, okay, we're gonna continue. Thank you, Mr. Miley. We're gonna continue with the meeting. Uh, council member Lang.
Okay. Um, I, I, I love how, in just bringing up the ethics, uh, as a, as an agenda item, that we're becoming clear, more clearer about the reason why we need this. Um, and I just want to say that I'm really excited to have this in front of us. We, you know, this is something that I've been wanting to do since day one, and we've worked on different iterations of this. And Taylor, you're the one who came, and you brought it all together. So I am so grateful for your work. And I really want to tell just members of the public and anyone listening, uh, tonight or later, that this, the process of, of creating this was a, was about as collaborative as you can get with the Brown Act. Every one of our voices and perspectives was brought into this. And I really appreciate how our staff went about this. And I also appreciate the limitations that we have just given free speech and the limitations and the benefits of free speech, and what's acceptable and what's not. And also the, um, limitations of just laws that, that, you know, like Brown Act, for example. Um, and so those are all considered in these. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. First of all, I think that, eh, I think that there, uh, one of the things that is the most important to me about this policy is making sure that anyone giving, coming up to give a public comment or emailing a com- public comment, that they don't feel like there's going to be any retaliation or any, anything back. And, and because there are free speech laws that say that we really can't engage in social media, and we can't say any, much, um, from our perspective. So I think if there is a way to, which I really appreciate the spirit of the social media comments, um, the, that, that if there is a way to add something in about social media and about us listening to public comments that gives clearer directives for, um, the way that we treat, like what we're able to respond to and how we treat the public. So make it more explicit.
So on bullet point number, uh, I apologize, I should, should have put letters for these. I didn't want to make it too lawyer-y. Um, bullet point number three, under, uh, civility and respect, number four?
Yep.
So we communicate respectfully during public meetings on social media, in the media, and all other times by avoiding personal attacks, derogatory remarks, interrupting others using profanity and raising our voices. What, what would be helpful to clarify here?
Yeah. Uh, I think, I think, oh, go ahead, city manager.
If you want, it's just a suggestion. I mean, I think what's always, okay, so just, I'm a, I don't want to sound like a Luddite here, but I'm just going to maybe sound a little bit like that. Um, I always think it's the best practice to avoid chiming in in any social media discussion if you are a council member or a city employee. And I say that not because you don't have a right, because you do. The problem is, the public has a hard time divorcing you from your official role. And that's, and that's the difficulty. So I always recommend not saying anything. And you can, we can maybe, we, we try to speak with one voice. We have a public information officer for the city. Her name is Chrissy Rivera, and it's usually she or me that try to speak on behalf of the city. But that way, we also get away from, um, the Supreme Court effect where, you know, there's a vote, and let's say it's three, two, or four, one, and somebody really is passionate on the losing side and feels compelled to talk about that. Well, a vote of the council is a vote of the council is a vote of the council, and that's, we have to respect it. So I don't know if that helps or hinders you, but that's kind of the-
Yeah, um, you could do that. You could, um, you alw- I just want to say something. Of course, lawyer-y. Um, you always have the right as an individual to express your, um, personal opinion about things, even if you disagree with things of the council. The, specifically, the, I think the second bullet point on council members' rule recommendation, I think, would be helpful as a starting place, that you distinguish clearly between your personal opinions and official city communications when using social media. And then we could add a provision that, um, we agree to not talk about offici-
You could simply say something like, we, we strive to, to respect city council-
Thank you.
-decisions and something like that.
Great.
With an understanding that we're, um, or something to the effect of like, it's a priority of the council that, um, communications regarding official city communications, um, are transmitted through the city manager's office.
Wonderful. That would be great.
What was the last part?
Yeah.
That, um, communications regarding official city, uh, council decisions are transmitted through the city manager's office?
May I ask a question?
Um, yeah, I'd like to make a comment, but can I, um, well, first, I would just like to say, um, thank you once again. And, and, uh, also, I think Bill Miley brought up that this is not new, it's just condensed. We, as a council, however long we've had a council, decades, right? Um, we've had, first, we had, um, well, now we have Rosenberg's Rules of Order. We have the council protocols. We have the handbook for the city council commissioners and boards. And then we have the City of Ojai, uh, council member orientation materials. So we do have a lot of information and a lot of homework. And so I'm really grateful that all of this can be condensed into something that's, um, more user-friendly. And I loved what you said, that we act for the common good and that we set the tone. And to me, this really, the bottom line is in Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which I have quoted in, in the last four years several times. Um, debate on policy is healthy, debate on personalities is not. And if we could just stick to that, I think that we could, um, make a big step forward. Uh, and a lot of that has to do with self-control. It's really hard to be attacked and not become defensive. I think, though, in terms of social, emotional skills, that's the one thing that I think is the most important for any council member, anyone on a commission, uh, anybody who wants to s- to be, um, a public servant, that's what we need. Civility and respect, as Ms. Anderson, are the cornerstone of this. And also, the, the point we're, also, we're doing this for the staff, because we have an incredible staff. And it's much healthier for the staff when, um, the meetings are civil and respectful, and there's no name-calling or yelling. Um, you know, when, when someone yells, everybody else either goes into fight, or flight, or freeze, or faint. Um, that's, that's a really bad place to be in order to make a decision. So it just makes sense, if we want to make the best decisions that we possibly can, that we do our best to control ourselves and our emotions, and really just be civil. And that takes a lot of, I would say, endurance to just let it go. So, um, I would, uh, I support this wholeheartedly, and I'm, I'm really grateful that it's, that you've worked so hard. And thank you to council member Lang. We've worked together on this, and I, and I really appreciate all the dedication and your expertise, because this is your background. So thank you. Um, yeah, well, council-
Do you want to finish your train of thought?
I was, I was just gonna finish one, one last thing, and that is, um, under impartiality, under the second bullet point, I wanted to add gratuities as well because of the recent Supreme Court ruling. We can, I just, you know, that you can't accept bribes, but you can accept gratuities. Um, yeah. So I'd love to add that word to it as well. And that's all I have to, to add.
So, um, I would like some of the language that council member, um, rule has proposed, you know, added as, as point 11 and 12. And I would like, eh, if we could have a little further discussion on, you're just gonna automatically add it? There's, or what's the-
Uh, no, I have no plans to add it. I would express that, um, I would discourage the council from implementing rules related to family. You can only control yourselves. You're not able to control your family. Um, and then I would note, I think we should have a discussion about the truthful and honest, honesty policies. Um, like I mentioned previously, under the First Amendment-
Yeah.
You ha- you have the right to free speech. And unfortunately, that right, also, there's case law, unfortunately, that supports you have the right to be a liar. Um, so I just would be thoughtful about, maybe we could come to a compromise about, um, what truthful and honesty looks like, and seeing if there's a way to get somewhere productive under the First Amendment.
Yeah. Well, uh, I, I would, I would, we can't force this, but I would highly recommend that those of us who have partners or spouses, especially if they're very active on social media, that they also are informed about this code of ethics, because I have experienced what amounts to defamation of character. And I have, you know, people that are in the legal field have told me that I should do something about it, but I've chosen not to. Eh, and I, and I no longer, I try not to respond. Sometimes the statements are so outrageous that, um, you know, I'll, I'll, lately, I haven't responded at all. But in the past, um, I've been accused of the most outrageous things by partners and spouses on, of people, of council members. And I, so, eh, to bring me back to the point that you just said, could I have gone to the city and asked them to make a cor- the public information officer to make a, a public correction? Could I have done that?
Let me jump in here. Um, no, we, we, we really strive for one-way communication. We recognize that people have a, a right to, to freedom of speech and, and their opinions. And that even goes so far as if you allow links to platforms on your city website, um, you have to allow what could be a negative anti-city or anti-council member dialogue that ensues. It's, you just, you, you can't go in there and make, it's, it's totally inappropriate for the city to do that.
Okay, so, so I have no recourse to defend myself?
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all.
I mean, I could write an editorial for the paper.
Of course, of course. But, but I just, all I'm saying is, we, what we don't do, very often, there is something that is published either, you know, through a, you know, a media outlet or by an individual, and we might not agree with what it says. This happens quite frequently. And we, you know, so our, our recourse is, we can put out our own information, right? You're, you're a council member, you have the, the power of the pulpit. You can make statements during, you know, meetings and so forth.
Yeah.
But, well, we don't get in a back and forth and try to-
Yeah.
That, that's just not healthy for anybody.
But it has to be on the, something on the agenda. I can't just really, nearly make comments.
Well-
I'm looking forward to being at the podium.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, so just in terms of council member rules additions, and thank you, council member, for adding these. In terms of the legality of this, you're saying that you would recommend that, in terms of public communications, we don't, we only focus on ourselves and not any family members? I can only imagine saying that to my sons, not that they would ever comment on politics.
That is correct.
Guess what, kids?
Kids are known for commenting on politics. But yeah, um, focusing on your, this is council's code of conduct.
Okay. And then in terms of the truthfulness and honesty section, is there a way that you're, I mean, what do other cities do in terms of that? Do they, is that part of other policies or not?
You know, in my experience, I haven't seen it. Doesn't mean that it's not out there. I think, I think that most councils are operating from an assumption that people are being truthful and honest in their conduct, so they're not regulating it. Um, it's something that I can look into. I would, I would, I can try to, to come up with something that synthesizes this idea. Um, I was hoping, to be honest with you, that I had captured this sentiment, though, about, uh, where is it?
Number four?
It is, under, number two, transparency. The second bullet point, we clearly explain the rationale, considerations, data, and outside influences behind our positions and decisions, to be at least transparent about the information and where you're getting it, so that people can verify it on their own.
Thank you. Would a council member like to put a motion on the table that we can work with?
Well, I, I was gonna discuss.
Okay.
That's okay. So, um, I agree that most of what's in this, uh, code of conduct is stuff that should be common sense, that we should all be adhering to. Um, I think that, you know, there, there's an issue about, you know, setting rules and then a willingness to be governed by rules. And so the document is really only as good or successful as it, uh, as the people who are being governed by the document and, and their, you know, willingness to take it, um, to heart, take it seriously. And, um, I do have my concerns about that issue. Um, we talk about truth and honesty and, and, and having a mechanism for, you know, having two people start a, uh, a complaint against a council member based to- having two people start a complaint against a council member based upon truth and honesty. And I just see that being, having hearings over what's truth and honesty would be a horrific thing for our community to experience. We, I, you know, I have grand hopes for our next city council, but I could see us just spend meeting after meeting challenging whether somebody's been truthful or honest. I do have a problem with a few things that I think are, you know, maybe ambiguous and potentially problematic. So I think, I think that item 2.2 and item 5.3 potentially are inconsistent. So on the one hand, we're saying that when we, when we are going to vote a certain way on an item, that we give a full explanation of why we're voting a particular way. And then, on the other hand, we're saying, you know, don't talk more than five minutes. I know you get a, you know, second go-around, but it's, the two things don't necessarily work well together. I also, let's see. I thought that item 3.1 and the phrase "a personal relationship" is vague. So if you're going to talk about what influenced you on a decision and there's, you know, a personal relationship, how is that defined? I mean, how are you going to know when you need to be disclosing that you had a personal relationship with someone who, you know, influenced your decisions? I, I, I'm not crazy about that particular item. My, my biggest concern is over number 4.3 because we're mixing our city council conduct with social media conduct, which I personally don't engage in social media. And if I, you know, my preference would be that we had a code of conduct that said that we don't engage in social media and that we, if we've, if there's a need to respond to something in social media, it's raised and run through the city manager as a communication matter. But, you know, I think that, so I think that there's a, there's a First Amendment issue with respect to how we commute, communicate on social media, in the media, and all other times by avoiding personal attacks. I 100% agree with that for purposes of our city council meetings. But I, I think that we would run into problems regulating, unless we all agreed that we not participate in social media. That, that, I know Suzha believes she's the only person attacked in social media, but it's, that's far from true. So, no, I know, okay, I'm sorry. But, you know, how you respond to, you know, you know, people making statements that you don't believe are truthful or honest, I'm, I'm not a fan of regulating that response. I'll tell you what I, you know, thought about with all of this, is I was thinking that I want members of the public who are extremely skilled and have the desire to assist the community, to actually want to be a city council member and potentially run. And I think that we are in a horrible set of circumstances for achieving that. And I don't have a belief that this code of conduct is going to assist in that. Because people are going to say whatever they're going to say and, and then, I don't view this document as, you know, really helping with somebody, you know, with the circumstance where you're going to have I think we have way too much. I'm going to, I'm going to read something. And this is from a, there's a movie that I really enjoy called The American President, and there's a speech in it that I think is a good description for Ojai and a good segment of our politics. And, you know, during this, this speech, and I'm just going to read a couple of lines from it. It says, you know, "We have serious problems to solve, and we need serious people to solve them. And whatever your particular problem is, I promise you, my opponent is not the least bit interested in solving it. He's interested in two things and two things only, making you afraid of it and telling you who's to blame for it. That, ladies and gentlemen, is how you win elections." You know, we need to see and recognize that and how it's, you know, playing an out in our community. I will, I have to commend our mayor for being someone who has probably been, you know, more under assault than anyone I can imagine for the last couple of years. And, you know, I think she's amazingly graceful in her, you know, "Thank you, ma'am, may I have another?"
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to support this. The, you know, the additions, I don't think we should adopt anything on the additions. All of those proposed additions should be run through the city attorney's office with time to think about each and every provision. And, you know, it can be presented to the next city council. There's also part of me that isn't 100% comfortable with the idea that we're, you know, setting up some rules and we're going to have two people subjected to these rules in about 60 days who haven't participated in them. So I would have rather this came up in the next term. And I definitely believe that about the proposed additions, you know, which the public really isn't, hasn't had the chance to see a comment on. So I don't think we should consider those at all. So, did anybody make a motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
Would you go ahead and make a motion, please? And then we can move on. Yep, you'll be after the motion. Mayor Protam, do you want to make a motion?
Suzha wants to comment, and I'll let her comment.
Well, first of all, I think this is a great legacy for the next council. So I'm all in favor of approving it. And I don't, I mean, perhaps this council would consider, just for example, on point 11, truthfulness and honesty, how about we, would you consider substituting the word factual and honesty? And just that first line, not the rest, but just keeping it simple. And then the first point of number 12, I think that's a great way to summarize the right use of social media. Where it says, "We use technology and all media platforms responsibly, ensuring that our online presence reflects the dignity of our office and the emphasis, the values," and, oh, I think that's a little bit of a typo, "the values of our community, including accurate information and lack of insinuation, veiled or not." I mean, the fact is that social media is the fastest way to, to reach people quickly. It's like the new town hall, you know? And I love social media, and if it's used in a responsible way. So I would, I mean, to have this code of ethics and not mention social media at all when it is a big part of our life, not everyone, but most people, I would say. Maybe not even most people, but, you know, the next generation, surely. Yeah, so that my, my, would this council consider just the first sentence of point 11 and 12?
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve the Councilmember Code of Conduct and Ethics as proposed. And, and I do feel that, you know, in retrospect, it covers a lot, you know, of what I think Councilmember Rule is trying to say. And, but I would like to say, add point 11 and 12 is a nice number, too. Just like 10 is, factual and honest. "We commit to being factual and honest." That's a good reminder of all the previous points, actually. It's a summary. And then the point on social media. In effect, I would put number 12, make number 12 11 and 11 12. Does that make sense? Because it's kind of a summary, the last one.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second for that motion? I will second it. Yep.
Can I make a friendly, just one friendly amendment? Also, I would like to add gratuities to impartiality, bullet point two, and some of the language that you proposed for number four, bullet point three.
Yes, yes, the changes that, that you recommend, I accept those. Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Definitely.
What are those? What were those changes, please?
I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking back at my notes right now. Oh, it was, "We distinguish clearly between," I think it was actually an addition, it was actually Councilmember Rule's number 12.2. "So we distinguish clearly between personal opinions and official communications when using social media or publicly communicating about other council members. And we agree official positions of the city council are transmitted through the city manager's office."
That sounds good.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, we have a motion and we have a second.
Can I ask one other, one other question? Just as, this came in to, I believe it was one of the public comments. But I just, I forgot to mention it before. But do we have anything about the appearance of impropriety? The, or would that, is that, is that anywhere in?
No, the phrase "appearance of wrongdoing" or "appearance of impropriety" isn't in here, but the values are.
Okay, okay.
Of recusing yourself when you have a conflict, disclosing the conflicts, fair hearings, complying with the Brown Act. So all of those things are the appearance of wrongdoing, but we could add something that's more clear about avoiding actions that give rise to the appearance of, I would say, wrongdoing and propriety.
Wrongdoing?
One of those lary words that.
Uh-huh.
So, just as a point of comment, and that is that the more ambiguous these statements are, the bigger problem you have with the idea that we're going to end up having city council hearings over whether somebody satisfied that rule or not. So the appearance of impropriety is like, that's, you know, one of the problems that I think that I have with this is that ethics, for the most part, is self-governed. You know, we get guidelines for what our personal ethics are. You know, we're supposed to enforce them. And, you know, appearance of impropriety is something that's actually an admonition to people, you know, for their personal judgment. It's not really so much for the rest of the council to decide. And it's certainly something for the public to decide if they want to get rid of a council member because they're engaged in what they believe is inappropriate behavior. But I really am worried about that. And, you know, two, two council members making a complaint and having some hearing process at a city council meeting over that complaint.
Ms. Anderson, I'd love to hear a comment on that one, if you have any thoughts. Put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I understand where the Mayor Protam is coming from, and I think that sentiment is fair. I, I think that that's why I ended up not putting that phrase in there, because it would have required a definition. And I, I tried to be as specific as you can while being broad enough to capture the ethical ideas and issues that this council was facing. So I think that if you are going to add something about the appearance of impropriety, we should be clear about what that means, even if you're just limiting it to avoiding conflicts of interest under state law, right? So that it's a more narrow scope and clear. But even then, to the point about enforcement, there are mechanisms under state law if you didn't recuse yourself and you should have, and severe penalties in some cases, in most cases, actually. So.
Okay.
Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure where we are with my proposed additions. I just want to say that I feel like a commitment to facts, I'm definitely willing to take that, facts, over opinions and honesty. And I know that, and I agree, that these kinds of things are personal ethics that you have or you don't, or that come up if you happen to agree with the position. And the problem with this, once again, is that if a, if something supports your position, you're going to find it to be true and important and those kinds of things. And there's no way that a document like this can actually deal with that.
Can I share the motion with you?
Sure, yeah, please.
I think that that would be helpful.
Okay.
So Councilmember Francina moved to adopt the code of conduct with the following additions. To adopt your 11, we'll call it point one, "We commit to being factual and honest in our, in all our communications and actions as council members," and that would be number 12. She also moved to add the first sentence of 12 to number 11. "And we use technology and all media platforms responsibly, ensuring that online presence reflects the dignity of our office and the emphasis of values of our community, including accurate information, lack of insinuation, veiled or not." And then we have a friendly amendment by Councilmember Lang to add, "We distinguish clearly between..." clearly between personal opinions and official city communications when using social media or publicly communicating about other council members." And we have our notes on another page, officially agree, "We agree official positions of the city council are transmitted through the city manager's office." And then for section, and I'll add better numbering on this, my apologies, three, bullet number two, "We refuse addition is gratuities to gifts or favors." So the three would be there. "We refuse gratuities, gifts, or favors that could compromise or appear to influence our judgment."
Very good. So, just as a, a side note, thank you for incorporating those. I feel that it's very important that we have some accountability to the facts, so we don't live in confirmation bias. I just wanted to point out that, that Rebecca and I had a moment of, we're all in this together, so we forgave each other. So just, and I think it had to do with this ethics conversation, you know, yeah, so that was...
The magic is already working.
The magic is already working, I know.
Like, you made my whole night, thank you.
It was like, we're like, yeah, it's, you're right, that was just way out of, that was just out of control.
But let's carry, let's carry that energy with us, right? Like, let, let this not end today. We have a lot of hard decisions through the rest of the year, and like, I'm watching your meetings, right? Like, please, I worked really hard to bring you something that I've, I hoped would work for you, and I'm hoping, I know that it is not perfect, and that it should be a living document, the next council should pick it up. But I really hope that you all, as individuals and bodies, and about, as, oh my gosh, I've been talking all day, as a body, you take these things to heart, and, and you do this, and you live this, right? And, and the meetings, they get better and they get more efficient, and that you talk to each other with respect, and we, we set aside the things that cause us to be so frustrated with each other. Because individually, I can tell you, like, I know this is very Ted Lasso, but you're, I've gotten to know, you're really incredible people who really care about this community, and it's really unfortunate when the meetings don't reflect that, you know? So I'm excited to hear this positive energy, and I just, I hope that you continue to carry it with you through the rest of this term and into the rest of all of your time.
So I did have a couple other points that I, that I haven't spoken to. So, yeah, I, I, I think that we need some sort, for transparency, the first bullet, "We conduct public meetings and make decisions per the Brown Act and ensure accessibility to the public." You know, I have had problems with the Brown Act, and, you know, even after the first thing that set all of this off, I've had questions about whether or not we were properly, you know, noticing Brown Act. So it's been, it's been a problem for me, and I, and I have believed that we have been interpreting the Brown Act expansively, when the Brown Act says that you, that you interpret it narrowly, so, but I don't know what to do, right? Like, when I go in there and, and I'll make a comment, and it's like, nope, you're wrong, and, and I don't think I am, you know? So I either have to get up and walk out because I believe that the interpretation is overly broad, or, and, and so I, I have to decide that, you know, I'm not going to sit there and, and, and be in violation of the Brown Act because I truly do believe that it is. So I, I don't know what the mechanism is for that, you know? I mean, my only option, if I believe it to be a Brown Act violation, is to get up and to refuse to be part of it. You know, but we're relying upon an interpretation, so, so I am conflicted all of the time, and I do bring it up, that I don't believe that this is a properly noticed or an appropriate Brown Act, you know, closed session. But I'm usually, you know, there's nothing I can do about it, except for to walk out, and, and I'm not comfortable doing that either. So I don't know what the, what the, what the solution is for that. Honestly, I don't know how to deal with that. I am in a quandary when I believe this, so, and like I said, you know, I have believed it. So, the other thing under transparency is we clearly explain the rationale consideration, number two, I would like to see something like an ex parte disclosure like the planning commission has to make, you know, who they've talked to. Not your friends, you know, but if you've talked to an organization, if you've talked to a commission, if you've talked to an official, you know, if there's something that you're relying upon, I, I, or a, a party that has an interest, you know, who are, who's lobbying the city for something, be they a nonprofit, be they a community group, but they have an agenda, you know, and I, I think you need to, you need to disclose that.
Are you talking about for quasi-legislative or quasi-judicial decision?
Generally, I am talking about ordinances, but I'm also just talking about, you know, decisions that the council makes. I'd have to, I'd have to think about that more closely, what I'm really thinking about. Am I thinking about just votes that we take, or am I thinking about ordinances? Am I thinking about resolutions? Am I thinking about budget items?
So to be, to be clear, the planning decision, they are sitting like a mini...
No, yeah.
Judge, right? On planning commission decisions, they're known as quasi-judicial, that's where the due process rights kick in.
Right.
Quasi-legislative is ordinances and policy decisions where there is not a due process consideration and requirement to disclose those ex parte contacts
Right.
in those situations under the Constitution.
Yeah, and, and I'm not really talking about what is required by law. I'm talking about is what is required by the ethics of this council, you know, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing.
Yeah, and I know that they're a quasi-judicial body, I know that because of that, they have to disclose ex parte, and I know that we are a judicial body in some cases, or maybe we're quasi, but, you know, if people in organizations call us up, and, and, you know, they're our friends, and we listen to them, and then we come in and we say exactly what they said, I think we should disclose that. I, I just, I think we need to say, you know, they have a very specific agenda, I listened to them, it was, it was, you know, persuasive or not, yes.
Mr. City Manager?
Sorry, I just want to jump in. The only consideration I'd want you to think about is that we really want you to be available to everyone in your district, and sometimes, not always, you're going to have people that want to come to you with something, but they might not want to be disclosed.
And I'm not talking about individuals.
Okay.
I'm talking about community groups, nonprofits, commissions, I'm talking about official bodies in one way or another.
Fair enough.
No, definitely don't disclose
Yeah.
your constituents coming to you with a concern, that's not what I'm looking for at all. I'm looking for groups that have connections to our council, and those connections are never made transparent. That's what I'm really talking about, and I think that we're aware of that, and I, I think it's important that we say, "I talked to so-and-so, and this, you know, committee or this group, and this is what they told me." Because we all have friends, you know, that are on these, who call us up, and we listen to them, and yet we never say, you know, "Our friend who's part of this group called me up." So that, to me, I, I just think, I've always thought that we should have ex parte disclosures, you know, just, and, and once again, if it just comes down to whether or not we believe they're an organization or they're a group, that's fine. You know, as long as we're acting ethically, you cannot legislate ethics. I don't know how that happens. You can put up a guideline and a guidepost here, and people choose to be honest and fair and, and true about it, or they don't, and there's really not that much you can do about it, but I would like it to be in writing that if community, you know, if you are contacted, you know, and, okay, never mind.
Do you like to offer a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment that in, in, in some way, when you have an official body or a semi-official body or a community group that acts as a unit, and, you know, they have a vested interest in how something turns out, and you generally know that because they make public comment or whatever, that you disclose that, and it's perfectly fine, but I think it's just a matter of transparency.
Councilmember Francina, would you like to accept that amendment?
Well, it depends on how it's worded, you know? I, I mean, I, I think it's, I would almost automatically say, well, I spoke with Jamie at the chamber, for example, and he recommended this, that would be part of my discussion. And I think that, I think that's a good idea, I'm not quite sure, I have to leave it up to you how to word it. And also, I want to remind the council, this is a living document, the next council can grapple with it some more and fine-tune it, I think we should adopt it, but I too have one other question that was raised by Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Can I, just so, can we finish this? And, and my question is, are, is that in other codes of conduct, and other cities adopt that generally?
Yeah, I think that for ex parte contacts, anybody that, typically, the way the ex parte contacts works is if it's a quasi-judicial decision, so usually permits, land uses, those are the big ones, business licenses, appeals, any person that is trying to influence a decision outside of the public hearing is disclosed on the record so that the parties have an opportunity to respond to it.
Yeah.
What, right? So, but what Councilmember Rule is talking about is something broader than that, it sounds like for all agenda items, that there would be some level of disclosure for community groups, businesses, I'm assuming nonprofits, I'm trying to think if there would be any other groups that would be captured.
You know, it could be, it could be the chamber, it could be commissions, it could be, I mean, you know, I'm not even sure, but I'm, I'm really just about decisions, you know, when you're taking a vote, right? I just think that as, as part of transparency and as part of openness, we should know who's, who's, you know, and I don't mean this to be the way it's going to sound, but I don't know any other way to put it right now, is who's pulling the strings? It's fine if they're pulling the strings, it's perfectly fine, but just disclose who it is.
So the language in two, is, two, two, the second bullet point, is quite broad, so it's any outside influences besides, behind our positions and decisions. So where, or, is what you're asking, that you want specific examples of who those groups could be?
I do.
And including but not limited to?
I do, I want, I want, yes.
So, and including but not limited to community groups, businesses?
Yes.
Nonprofits?
Yes.
And similar community interest groups?
Yeah, community interest groups. I mean, you know, and...
Councilmember, do you accept that amendment?
I think that's fine, if, if, if Taylor doesn't see, did I say that right?
Taylor, like Taylor Swift.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't see it as being problematic.
So I think that the language in, in, of itself is quite broad right now, and it captures it, but if you, if you'd prefer examples, and I, I think that it would be, I think it would be worthwhile to acknowledge the city manager's point of, this, this rule isn't intended to disclose contacts of individual community members.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not, no, I, I, and I don't think that anyone's assuming that. And then for number five, and I'll try to move a little bit more quickly, I do believe that we need to limit the time we speak, I think, and I do it myself, we all do it, we just kind of wander off, and then we're 20 minutes later, we don't even know where we started, it has nothing to do with the matter at hand, and it's 12:00 midnight, and...
Okay, okay.
You're doing it right now, good example.
I am, I'm giving a really good example, that's correct, so I, I, I do...
Let's wrap it up.
Yeah, I do think that the five minute, I, I support it 100%.
Five minutes is a long time.
Yeah, it is, it is a long time.
It could be three minutes, you know, I would be fine with three minutes, like, say, say your piece, say it succinctly, and move on.
Well, and you can always queue back up, you can do three minutes, three minutes, you can, you can say a lot of things in three minutes and yield the floor. I've seen success in other bodies who have done this, and it forces you, as a council member, to make your point succinctly, and then a lot of times, too, when you get really upset, by the time it gets back around, you've had an opportunity to take the three big seconds in and three big seconds out, and maybe you're not so upset about it.
Yeah, and I also think that it allows for a more holistic discussion, that is, if it comes back to you, you can make, you can sort of counter points or agree with points or potentially come to a consensus easier because, you know, you're not just getting your one time to speak.
Exactly.
You know, and then you're, then you're done. And finally, as far as respecting the formality, I, I most definitely agree, and I don't know, this would be the presiding officer, but I think that we should be referring to the public by their surname. I, I think that part of this out-of-control public that we've experienced over the last two years is because we call them by their first name, we're friendly, you know, I mean, the amount of vetting that, just, just vetting from the public that I've heard, I, I think that there is some sort of barrier to a surname, a formality to it, that might put some control on, you know, the ability of everyone to think that they can come up and just, you know, trash whoever happens to be sitting here, which has been rampant these last two years, across the board for all of us, I'm sure.
I don't accept that.
Okay.
Hold on, there was a lot of meat and potatoes in that. What part don't you accept? The last part about the surname?
You have to call somebody Mr. or Mrs.
But we accept, we accept the including but not limited to addition to two, two, right? Which is, "We clearly explain the rationale, considerations, data, and any outside influences behind our positions and decisions, including but not limited to community groups, businesses, nonprofits, and similar community interest groups." We started with, "This rule is not intended to include individual community members." I would recommend some kind of limiting language there.
Yes, please.
Right? Because sometimes there are, there are very powerful people in the community that I don't think that that's what you're intending to capture. We're, we're talking about when individual, how do I, how do I say this? Where like complaints are coming to you, or things intended to be private. This, this feels very unwieldy as I'm saying it out loud.
Yeah.
So maybe scratch that part.
Yeah, I think individual council members can do that, and it's, and, and it's encouraged, people, you know, you know, like that kind of information, I don't think we should make it mandatory, I, I don't, I don't want to make that.
For which part, mandatory?
The part, the, the, the new part.
The individual mem, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to do all that.
Okay.
But if, but if, as an individual council member, we wish to disclose as much as possible, we can do so, and I do like the five minutes so that we don't, you know, we don't have, we need to understand that if the hour's late, we don't need to take up five minutes, let's hope we're mature enough, but I don't, on the other hand, I don't want to be nervous and not be able, I want to be able to complete my thought, and sometimes that takes five minutes, usually it doesn't. And I still have one question that I must ask.
Please.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, you brought up a very important point, where on, on number three, impartiality or a personal relationship, I have a personal relationship with hundreds and hundreds of people, meaning that we're friends, but it's not like a financial, and, and certainly, it so happens that sometimes these, we, we're such good friends that we can totally disagree on political things. So, but, what, maybe, do we need one more word, what is meant by personal relationship?
Yeah, or you could just strike it and leave it to...
What were you trying to capture with that? Because that's my problem, is it?
Yeah.
It could...
Personal, financial?
You know what? No, yeah, so...
You know, if you don't know, you're supposed to be disclosing it, you're not going to disclose it, and that's...
That's fair. To be honest with you, I was staring at this for a very long time, so I apologize for not catching that. Let's see, I think I was thinking of close personal relationships, but as I say that out loud, it's like, okay, so under the Political Reform Act, it's limited to your immediate family, immediate family is your legal partners, so domestic partner or a spouse, and your dependent children. It doesn't include your grown children, it doesn't include your cousins
Your friends.
or your mom, or your dad, right? So there's an extended group there, I believe that even though that's familial relationship, so, I think that's where I was going with that, where there's this extended group of, or business partners, right? That you may not have, you may have a business, really, actually, that would be a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act. So it may be just best... So it may be just best to strike that language altogether, since it's unclear.
I think that's a, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, it's such a small town.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
After teaching here for 20 years, so many of my students and parents, everybody.
Yeah.
If you changed it to familial relationship, I think I'd probably be okay with it. But saying personal relationship...
Is council open to familial?
I, I would hesitate, I would, I would be against going with familial because a lot of times you have estrangements, or you have family members at odds with one another, or family dynamics where they're not, where it wouldn't be a conflict of interest. And so I, I would be against family relationships.
Okay.
It would just strike.
I'm going to make a suggestion that we call the question, and remember that this is a living document, and we can, we'll just keep working on it. So, roll call, please.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, thank you, and we, no council member, just remember, everybody, O-Hi days on Saturday, so come to the dunking booth. We'll see. Any city manager report?
Wait, can, can it?
No, just want to make sure that the public is aware we are having a meeting to discuss the gymnastics program proposed changes. Again, it's on the meeting in between the two meetings in November, Tuesday, November 19th, 6:00 PM, here at Kent Hall. And we'll make sure that some publicity is put out there so people are aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Councilmember Lang, councilmember report?
Yes, I just had one thing to add, and that is Ames with St. Francis Challenge said that they are looking for interns and volunteers at the tent town. And they're also looking at programs, starting programs for adopting a tent and, and things like that. And so, so you can, I'll post this on my social media and on my website, and anyone can find this out.
A couple of the mayor's youth council members are volunteering, which is fantastic. Okay, every, we're good? All right, thank you all for a productive and civil meeting. We are adjourned.